I'm calling this meeting to order. Checking to see who is, there we go. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee held on Tuesday today, September 24th, 2004, commencing at 4:31. Council members in attendance today are Councilmembers Stewart, Anderson, Fields, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Salah Houdin, Council President Vanessa Kritzler, and myself, Councilmember Nueva Camila as the presiding officer. There are four items on the agenda today, and the first agenda is our Recreation Summer Recap. And joining us is Director Hamilton to let us know how our summer went.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm Director Lorraine Hamilton from the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm joined today by our Deputy Director Zach Hooverner and our Recreation Manager Erica Chua to share a little bit about our recreation programs from the summer, including our summer camps. We also do have the next two items, which is the Summer Events Recap and a Redmond Senior and Community Center update as well. So I'm going to hand it off to Erica.
Hi, let's see, is that working? All right. Hi, I'm Erica Chua and the Recreation Manager, and I'm excited to share some numbers and information from our great 2024 summer. So I'll start with just some high-level details. I'm excited to report that 80% of our summer camp survey respondents would recommend our summer programs to others. So that's always great to hear that people want to return, especially when you consider that we did serve 4,091 campers at 367 different youth summer camps this year. Looking at our fees collected, we brought in about $1.3 million and then $1.6 million for our summer activities, so that includes our summer camps. Drilling down to some of our specific areas, I'll start with our youth and teens, which is a huge part of who we serve for the summer. Overall, we're really pleased with this past summer regarding participation statistics, our financial data, and the performance. In 2024, we really worked to create a balance between our camps and summer activities, as well as having our parks available for passive and drop-in use. So we did see more open times in our parks and on our trails. Of course, that being said, we hosted a total of 367 camps internally and in partnership with 29 contractors. So we had some really fun new offerings, including a choir camp that was very well-received and a new cricket program as well. So of those total camps, we had lots of returners. So like I said, we served 4,091 total registered campers, and about a third of those campers took three-plus weeks of camps. So they came back for several different weeks, and then about a third took two-plus camps or two-plus weeks of our camps. So that's always really fun to see. The Old Firehouse Teen Center was still in full, kind of full-on mode with our Friday concerts each week, as well as our open-mic nights on Tuesdays, and we did host our annual Battle of the Bands, too, through Derby Days. The recording studio was available, and then also we had actually one of our best years ever for RYPAC, so we have about 50-plus members in our RYPAC group, so that's really fun to see. Looking at our adaptive offering, I'm excited to report that this year we served a wider range of participants. We had some new social outings, so taking our participants to the zoo and some of the other places in Seattle area and Redmond area. And so that was really fun to see us be able to serve more people through those programs. Looking at our sports and fitness programs, overall, we saw the returning of several of our great contractors that we've worked with in the past, including Skyhawks, I9 Sports, our tennis outreach program, and then also, again, like I said, the addition of the Cow Cricket Group, which was fun to see that do well. We had our adult sports leagues and also our free agent sports for those that want to participate but maybe aren't part of the team as of yet. And then, of course, our very robust field rental program as well. We issued over 119 permits from June to August this year. That's using those fields from Monday through Friday in the evenings, as well as our daytime use for everything from our adult leagues and our youth groups to also some of our sports camps that I mentioned as well. And then our fitness and wellness programs did fantastic this past year, especially with the addition of the Redmond Senior and Community Center, bringing on that great group fitness exercise area. We had more than 1,500 total registered participants for programs there this summer, and we offered several new fitness and wellness programs, diving a little bit more into some of the wellness programs as well, bringing in some instructors to do things such as meditation and sound bath types of classes. Our outdoor programs, which are always very popular, served more than 400 kids in our summer camps. Farrow McWhorter Farm brought on a large number of supplemental staff and had our largest number of adult and youth volunteers, with over 30 adult and youth volunteers out at the farm, making sure that folks had a great experience. And of course, some of you may have seen the return of Big Truck Day at the end of the summer here, too, with over 200 participants. And then our seniors have been very happy with our new Redmond Senior and Community Center. So our senior lounge and library has been very well utilized, with over 700 seniors participating in drop-in programs each week this past summer, and about 670 on average participating in our registered programs. We've served more than 1,987 lunches at the new Senior and Community Center, and starting here in September, we're now offering lunches three times a week, so that number will only go up. So we're really excited to share lots of great numbers and lots of great utilization of our facilities and parks. The other thing I did want to share in regard to our summer programming is just a little background, too, on how we operate our summer programs with staffing. All of our summer staff, from full-time all the way to supplemental, including our volunteers as well, all go through a background check program, and that is true of our contractors as well. So all of our contractors are also required to have a full background check on all staff, so not just their frontline staff, but also their staff that run the programming for those camps. So I will open it up to questions.
Counsel, just a reminder that no action is needed to be taken on this, but any questions or concerns that you have. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you. So I don't see any information on, like, helping people who can't afford the fees. You mentioned the fees, you mentioned the programs. Do we have any statistics or any points of discussion about, I don't know what to call them, scholarships, supplementals, whatever terms are being used to help people who can't afford?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for that question, Councilmember Fields. I'm really excited to share, actually, that we, our Fee Assistance Program for 2024 is the most robust fee assistance program we've had. And so since January 1st through, actually, we just ran the numbers today to make sure that we'd have everything up to date, we have issued $43,980 in fee assistance. And so this is much higher than what we've done in the past. So in 2023, we awarded, or we issued $16,939 in fee assistance, 218 individuals. So this year, serving 358 individuals, we're looking at being able to roll out that program to many more people than we have in the past.
Counsel Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Lots of great summer programs, so really exciting to hear this report. And one thing that I thought of while I was reading through is, I know a lot of the teens in the area need public service hours. So is there any sort of program that we could have that would help those teenagers get those public service hours that could also include our seniors? So I know I've seen a lot of programs where, you know, teens go and help out seniors around the house and doing things that they need help with. Any way that we can just strengthen community through connecting teens and seniors and helping them achieve those hours that they need to graduate? I think that would be an interesting add-on to this program.
Yeah, I think that's something that we definitely like to look more into. I know that right now, we, too, have two great programs that kind of speak to what you're talking about. We have a great gardening program, which is our teens and our seniors doing the gardening plots over at our old Firehouse Teen Center. And this year, they have donated over 50 pounds of food to Hope Link, so that's a great program. And then we also do have a tech assistance program, and our teens help some of our seniors get online. And as we made a change to a new software system, they were able to help some of those seniors also set up accounts, too.
Do you know if those hours count towards their public service credit? They do?
Yes, all they need to do is bring the form in for us to sign that they did community service hours. We also have a lot of teens who volunteer at things like Derby Days and other events that also count for their community service hours. And then a lot of our teens out at Farrow McWhorter that do the volunteer program are also able to use those. So we do actually have a lot of opportunities, but always looking to increase those, and we'll continue to look at that into the next year.
Counsel President.
Thank you so much for the information and all the great work. So exciting to hear about all the engagement of our community. Just since it's on here around the senior lunches, I thought I'd ask the question so we could have it answered for our listening audience. Since now that the senior lunches have come back, it's a little different than it was when we had the previous Senior and Community Center. Can you share, just in terms of the cadence of, like, the number of lunches, the reasoning for how that's changed over time and the city's kind of current plans going forward?
Yeah, so we currently, like I said, offer senior lunch on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and this is part of a larger effort to look at what other community centers on the east side are offering, so that seniors, while they may have to travel, could get a hot lunch five days a week. So on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we have, on average, I would say about 70 people that come to that, to our lunches. And I'm not going to remember off the top of my head exactly what those other communities are that offer lunches on Mondays and Fridays, but again, across the east side, people are able to access a hot lunch five days a week.
Great. And my understanding is that previously, it was the, those lunch, the other days were subsidized by a nonprofit that's no longer able to do so.
Actually, previously, our entire lunch program was operated and funded by Catholic Services. So prior to the pandemic, all five days of the week, they came in and cooked and served that lunch. After the pandemic, they were not able to stand up lunch five days a week, and in part, that's because they're also serving lunch at other community centers in Kirkland and in Bellevue as well. And so through the staff getting a King County grant, we were able to expand to the three days, because Catholic Services is only able to do one day a week with us. So we've been able to expand up to three because of the grant programming or the grant funding, and then we were able to bring a supplemental on that's able to help serve those lunches. So staff have been really creative and worked really hard to get us stood up to three days a week, because at one point, it was actually looking only like one day a week. So we're really happy with that. And then also, because a lot of our seniors were going out to Kirkland and Bellevue already, those lunches are still happening as well.
Great. So what I'm hearing is the city's actually investing more in the senior lunches.
And we were previously, that's correct. Yeah, we actually, it is actually taking us a little bit more work this time, this go-around, and so we really wanted to make sure that what we stood up to start with was actually something we could sustain into the future, rather than, you know, really pushing for maybe the full five days, but then realizing in a year or so that we don't have the resources to maintain that and having to pull it back. So right now, we're at three days a week and are feeling like that's really sustainable, and we'll see what the future holds.
Thank you so much. I know it means a lot to our seniors and just, I've had this question come up a bunch, so I thought I'd just ask it in this meeting. Thanks.
Counsel, are there any other questions? Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks so much for the update and helping to make Redmond a great place to spend the summer. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields.
This is only tangentially related, but I noticed that the parking lot at the pool near Last Dow Park, which also has pickleball, or maybe there's still tennis courts, I don't know, but it says "pool parking only," and it's all the time. Is that city sanctioned? Is that a city decision, or is that the pool people putting that out?
I can follow up with that a little bit. That's kind of a complex question that I would love to chat about later.
Okay.
We're having a lot of parking issues up there, particularly, we have a lot of high school students trying to park across the street, and so we're attempting to deter that, but we're also, we actually also had some teenagers drive through the park the other week. So we're just really struggling a little bit with maintaining parking up at that location, and we are continuing to do everything that we can.
Okay. I get it. Maybe the signs should say "bad parking, not allowed."
Bad parking not allowed. Duly noted. I will run that through my communications team and see what they think.
Thank you.
Bad parking not allowed.
Looking like there's no other questions or comments, I just wanted to ask a follow-up question on the senior lunches. I understand that Redmond is taking care of three out of the five days, and that surrounding communities are doing the Monday and Friday. My question is about the communication going out to our seniors, if there is communication to let them know that while we don't have it here, please check out Kirkland, Bellevue surrounding areas.
Yes, that communication has been had, continues to be had, and was also during the, during, when we were doing curbside lunches. That was a big part of our communication as well, because those communities were doing those lunches at that time as well.
Great. Thank you so very much. Thank you for presenting this. Going on to our second item, is going to sound similar but is different. While we were just talking about the Recreation Summer Recap, we're going to roll into the Summer Events Recap, and we're going to continue on with Director Hamilton. We've got a couple of other folks joining us. Zach is also going to be staying on with us. And welcome.
This next item is our Summer Events Recap. I'm joined still by Zach Hooverner, our Deputy Director, Brittany Pratt, our Recreation Business Manager, and Nicole, Nicole McDonald, who is our Events and Marketing Supervisor.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Nicole McDonald. I'm the Events and Marketing Manager. I'm excited to share about highlights, data and sustainability metrics for our 2024 Derby Days, as well as information and data that was collected around our special event miscellaneous permits this year. We were very excited to have steady participation and attendance in our Derby Days event with 35,000 attendees and 145 volunteers this year. We also saw a larger number of community booths than we have since the beginning of the pandemic, with 151 total booths. We also saw increased usage of the R Cups in the second year, which was one of the sustainability and environmental initiatives that we introduced last year. And we are seeing kind of a steady, or we saw an increased revenue in our sponsorships, carnival revenue, and booth revenue, which we're very excited to see with an increase of $113,000 in sponsorships, $31,000 in carnival revenue, and $25,000 in booth revenue, which of course supports the event. Additionally, in our special events permitting, we're seeing a steady growth of audiences for some of the annually permitted events that come in year-to-year, and we are also seeing a very wide range of events, as you can find in our attachment, from dances to concerts, as well as a lot of races. Redmond has a lot of stuff to offer folks during the summer, and we're continuing to update permitting processes each year based on feedback from the Special Events Committee and event producers. I'm going to open it up for any questions or comments.
Counsel Vice President Forsyth, kick us off.
I know my comment will not be a surprise to anyone in the room, but looking forward to the days when we can get back to a Derby Days community bike ride. And happy to make connections, us, too.
Where applicable. We are always, again, not, this comment will not be a surprise to you. We are always open to those community connections. Unfortunately, most connections have resulted in folks not being able to financially help stand that event, portion of the event, up. And so we continue to look towards solutions. I know that there's another individual that Zach is meeting with very soon, and so we continue to look at all of the options for what we can do into the future, and also continue to be really excited about the way that our relationship with the Marymore Velodrome has grown, and I know it's been really impactful for them as well. So yes, and, us, too.
And yes, I second the Velodrome. I know that they've been really excited to get that support and have more community members coming out to those events. They've, actually, for Nationals, they were thrilled to tell the National Velodrome folks what their audience attendance was, because Nationals didn't believe it. So pretty great.
Councilmember Salah Houdin.
Thank you. Really appreciate this update. And one thing that I did want to call out that actually links to the first item is specifically RYPAC volunteers and the teens that helped in Derby Days were, I guess, instrumental in making the event happen. They were everywhere, and I just want to give them a shout-out. And having 50 teenagers, youth, that are really engaged with the city is really positive to see, so thank you.
We would be nowhere without those volunteers.
Just to interrupt super fast, for our listeners that are not familiar with our many, many acronyms, could you please explain, break down, what RYPAC stands for?
Redmond Youth Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. I appreciate that.
Partnership.
Partnership. Wonderful.
Redmond Youth Partnership Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Counsel President Kritzler.
I just want to say thank you to all of our staff for being so hardworking and putting on these amazing events. I just feel like our city comes so alive during the summertime, kind of spring, spring to fall, really. It's incredible to be able to see all these events, especially Derby Days, but also, you know, throughout the summer. And I see it even just in how people talk about our community, new people on social media forums, saying, "I felt so welcomed because there was something for me to do, and people welcomed me in through this event or that, and I saw my culture here, I saw my community here," and just want to say thank you for all the work that you all do for that.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. What a great summer, and I echo the comments of my colleagues, it was an amazing Derby Days and so many great connections and moments and just celebrations. It was awesome. And I'm always amazed, too, the, for me, my favorite part of Derby Days is actually produced by a separate group, but the number of people who are willing to stand in line for an hour to kick off their day with Firehouse pancakes, to me, signals the demand for the event, like Derby Days, right? And the traditions that come along with that. I've gotten some feedback from community, a couple things I'll pass along. We are very proud of the diversion rates at this event when it comes to solid waste. I think that as we utilize more and more volunteers, this is an area where we could actually deploy a lot of super recyclers. So young people or the like who could help man some of these waste stations and keep our waste streams even cleaner at these events. I think that actually folks would be happy to take on an hour of doing that and help to do some environmental education along the way, too. I also had a lot of interest, not just in a community bike race, although, or a bike ride, that of course comes up frequently, but also, we have an e-bike culture and just a bike culture in Redmond that's, you know, we have a property in town who does their summer car show, and there's like amazing cars every weekend. I heard interest in a community bike show for the morning before the grand parade, and I thought that was actually kind of cool and possibly low-cost in some kind of way. So those are some of the ideas and feedback I heard, and I also wonder, my question is, what are the best ways for community to get in touch with you all or to share ideas to help shape the future of Derby Days?
Yeah, one of the biggest ones is in participating in the surveys that we issue at and after the events. We read through all of that feedback, and we really take it to heart. I would also say that if that survey is not open, events@redmond.gov is the best way to reach out to us and talk to us about future partnerships, ideas, or interest in participating in the events.
I would also like to validate that I feel like the whole bike show thing would gain some serious traction, because my husband's a biker and he loves talking about his bike. So I actually don't think that's a terrible idea. I kind of love it. So thank you for sharing that. Zach also likes bikes, so he identifies with that.
And one more comment, not question. Of course, I absolutely love the fact that we had $1.3 million of impact for vendors and small businesses here in Redmond in a very short amount of time. And while that number I'm very happy with, I'm even happier with how many touchpoints people had to interact in community intergenerationally and through a wide array of diverse events and event types. I think that is just absolutely incredible, and that's what we can't put a price tag on. We can't monetize how much of an impact it has when we're making those community connections and interactions. So thank you for all the work that went into Derby Days this year.
Moving on into our agenda item number three, which is the Redmond Senior and Community Center update. Director Hamilton is going to stay on with us, as is Deputy Director Zach Hooverner. Do we have anybody joining us for this one?
You're just stuck with us.
All right, well, let's get to it, then.
All right, I'm actually going to hand this update off to Zach, and he's going to present this item.
Thank you, Zach.
All right, good evening, Counsel. At the May 28 PES meeting, Director Hamilton gave a month-long update of when we opened the Redmond Senior and Community Center. And at the time, Counsel had requested that we come back, maybe in the five- or six-month timeframe, to just give an update on that beautiful facility. And so I'm super proud today to stand in front of you all, sit in front of you all, and just promote the great work that our staff have been doing. So I'll just start this by saying that staff continue to learn that building, and that's a combination of factors. That's including our facilities team who's out there troubleshooting, you know, new buildings have, you know, learning curves, right, and quirks. And so we're learning about those structural and mechanical and lighting systems, and we have a great feedback loop for staff to understand, you know, are there warranty issues? Okay, we're handling it that way. Is it a learning or a training opportunity? Okay, let's schedule those. And so those are ongoing. A lot of the things that I'm going to be presenting today has also been due to community input and feedback, and so just want to thank the folks who are listening online and anyone that you are able to connect with offline. Just, we really encourage folks to come in, to talk to staff, to call our customer experience line. We can help give you that information. There's been, you know, several emails that have gone back and forth whether that information is good or, you know, past history. I just encourage community to just come, enjoy a free cup of coffee. If you want to join us for, you know, in the senior lounge or senior library, please do so. Come up to our front desk. We're happy to provide all this information for you. With that, really excited to first talk about our new program called Community Program Contractors. And so Erica, actually, our Recreation Manager, really led this process along with staff, and so we've expanded our application process. This is for individuals or organizations interested in offering free programs with significant community benefit or impact, and they can apply through a simple online form. This is different than summer camp contractors that will still be separate. We note that sometimes people are, you know, may have been confused in the past, and so we denote it multiple times throughout that process, that summer camp contractors, please, you know, fill out this form. If you're a retired teacher or retired professor that just wants to provide a community program, you can do so now. And so really want to just highlight that. And this is also a result of Counsel feedback of how do we create more options for our community to engage and to share their expertise. All these contractors still follow our background check process, and we're really excited to be rolling this out. Pricing and passes. So I want to preface this section by saying that there are both fee and non-fee-based options at the new Redmond Senior and Community Center. So our senior lounge, our senior library, our lobby areas, et cetera, are all free of charge. Please come in during any operational hours. You can come and sit down, again, have a free cup of coffee, talk with staff, talk with community. There are also fee-based activities and more of our active recreation. And so the fitness zone, the track, the drop-in activities, and all fee-based programs, locker rooms, there is a fee. This follows our cost-of-service policy adopted by Resolution 1557 in November of 2022. So there is a component that we sometimes are compared to maybe other community centers in the region. It's really, in my opinion, an apples-to-oranges comparison, because we are required to charge a fee based on that cost-of-service policy, whereas a potential community center or another recreation department elsewhere may not be beholden to that. We did hear lots of community input once we released our pass. We did hear lots of community input once we released our pass options. And through community input, we did add a pass. And so, now there's really five different pass types. There's a daily pass, a monthly pass, an annual pass, a 10-punch pass, and a 20-punch pass. That monthly option was added on September 3rd. And from a really high level, we are seeing, and we just pulled this data, is about 80% of our pass sales have been daily passes. 13% have been 10-punch, 6% 20-punch. Again, we just released these monthly passes, but we saw about 40 or 50 people buy those monthly passes. So, we'll probably see additional monthly passes once those initial 10-punch and 20-punch have expired or they've gone through all those punches. So, that's a great community feedback that we heard and we've implemented. Year-to-date, we're seeing about, of those pass holders, 50% are adult residents, defined as 18 through 50. 20 to 25 are youth and senior residents. 20 to 25%, and it's varying upon month-to-month, but 20 to 25 are non-resident youth and seniors, sorry, 50% pass holders are adult residents, 20 to 25% are youth senior residents, 20 to 25% are non-resident adults, and the lowest percentage, about 5%, less than 5%, are non-resident youth and seniors. And so, one of the biggest things that we learned as we, you know, studied our community centers report back many years ago was like, how do we fill this gap of adults and active recreation? And we're seeing that, as well as obviously our seniors and youth coming through the building. Fee assistance, I know that we already hit on, but one thing that I'll just add is that, yes, when we revamped that program, we moved from a cap of about $400 per individual per calendar year to about $1,000 per calendar year. We've already shared those numbers and we're just really excited to see that. We do get a lot of questions on, you know, whether this fee be more or less expensive than in years past. We're happy to communicate and educate our community on maybe the reasons why we charge for the areas that we do. We also really try and communicate the areas that are free and there's options for anyone. The fee assistance obviously is something that we have felt over the years that we could do better from an equity standpoint. And so, we have those fee assistance forms translated into English, Spanish, Hindi, Russian, and Chinese. There are also fillable PDFs now, so people can just fill it in and send it via email. They can also come in and submit that. And we will work with those individuals and get them fee assistance if they are eligible. Also, super happy to announce that Silver Sneakers, we signed a contract with Silver Sneakers after many months of back and forth and legal councils going back and forth. But it is live and it is a program that can help lower the cost for those folks in our community 65 and older. Passes are for qualifying Medicare Advantage Plan holders and includes monthly access or unlimited access to our fitness zone, our track, drop-in gym activities, and locker rooms at no cost to the participant. Those younger than age 65 may also qualify if they do have Medicare and Advantage Plan. Participants show their proof of Silver Sneakers membership. Right now, it is required that they come in person to talk about that. They're within our contractual agreement. We have to see their identification, their member ID, and then we put them in our system. Check-in is required every time the participant enters the facility. Customers can also download the app and can check themselves in through their access card if that is helpful for them. We also have been doing a big marketing push, not only for the Silver Sneakers program and some of the other programs that I've talked to you today on, but particularly Silver Sneakers. There's been a lot of questions, so staff put together a one-sheet, an FAQ, if you will. We have been hearing community input on the Silver Sneakers program where seniors have said, "Hey, this is a great, you know, benefit." Also, you know, not everyone has Medicare Advantage plans. And so, we went to the Senior Advisory Committee meeting this past week and had a great and robust conversation about that. So, we just shared that we are working through any and all ways that we can help support and lower costs to our community so that they can actively recreate in that building and elsewhere. The last update I have for you today, and then happy to open up for questions, is just our rentals. So, our rental program, you know, opening up the building, we have successfully booked a rental every single Saturday from July through December. We also have several reoccurring weekly rentals for differing community groups. And so, we're just seeing tremendous demand and our staff are doing a fantastic opportunity, juggling that balance of recreation programs, non-fee-based programs, meetings, trainings, and also community rentals. With that, I open it up for any questions you may have.
Counsel, just a reminder that this is just receiving information. We don't need to give any direction on this, but any questions or comments? And Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. So, we've heard a lot of feedback and I appreciate all the work going towards Silver Sneakers and other programs that helps seniors get into the fitness programs. But we've heard a lot of feedback around the track and accessibility of the track for seniors during those senior hours. Is that something we've been thinking about? Is there a direction of policy that council needs to give to make that happen? I'm sure there's liability involved. Could you just kind of run through that in two minutes?
Yeah, so we've gone back and forth on this and ultimately, folks can use that track if they purchase a daily pass, a monthly pass, any of the pass options, or attend an activity or program at the center.
So, if they're dropping into the senior area for a blood pressure check, they can go upstairs and use the track?
If it's fee-based.
If it's fee-based, okay. Is there a way that we can make it so that it doesn't have to be fee-based for those, what is it, 10 to 4 senior hours? That they, you know, we want our seniors moving, right? We want them walking. So, how are we looking at that?
Yeah, it's actually really complicated.
I'm sure.
For a few reasons. One is kind of the checking them in and staffing it. And so, our staffing upstairs is based on usage and because of cost recovery, those costs have to be covered through fees. And so, we're really trying to find that balance. There also aren't really, I guess I would challenge that there are senior hours, just because the building is open kind of all hours. And so, because one of the biggest pieces of feedback that we actually heard during the community engagement process was from, you know, there's different subsets of seniors. There's seniors who are kind of, you know, 70-plus, and then there's kind of those rising seniors. And a lot of our rising seniors actually said, "I'm not going to be there between the hours of 10 and 4. What about me?" And so, it becomes really difficult to kind of parse that out hour by hour, group by group. And so, the determination was made that fitness or like the active recreation zones are to the left and are, to be able to access those things will require some kind of a pass. We're doing everything we can to make that cost minimal to nothing. And if there are seniors who are really interested in accessing that and cost is an issue, there are a lot of ways for us to help make that happen. We just need them to come talk to us. And so, if they come to the front desk, our staff is more than welcome, more than happy to help them navigate through, whether it be Silver Sneakers or fee assistance or what their options are. And I'm pretty sure that a lot of those that have come and talked to our customer experience staff have been able to find solutions. So, that would be our first request, is that we're able to kind of try to help people navigate through that system, simply because the management of different groupings for our front desk staff as they go left through to the active recreation gets really convoluted and difficult.
Can we just have a check-in in a couple of months to see how that's going with?
I would actually recommend, or prefer, if we could give in another probably almost six months and allow us to really kind of try to make progress with this one, simply because in addition to maybe some of the barriers around like fees and things like that, one of the other barriers and one of the other things that we're really realizing is that our community is actually really not used to having this type of a community center. We actually haven't ever operated a community center like this in Redmond before that has some free things, but also these fee-based things. And so, I think there's a fundamental piece of education that needs to happen. And I would really love for us to have enough time to be able to walk through that with the community, to see if we can't get us there, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fields and then Councilmember Stewart.
Can you send to council at some point what getting us there is defined as? Like, when you said you want a chance to work it out, I'm not quite sure what you're hoping to achieve.
I'm hoping to achieve a level of community education with our user group. So, I think there was, for whatever reason, I'm actually not entirely certain, an understanding that the entire community center would be free. And that was actually never part of the conversation around the construction of this facility. And so, we're really trying to work with community members. So, if we have an, if you have an individual who's coming to you, Council Vice President Forsyth, and they're like, "I really want to be able to walk the track. I can't walk the track because it costs $3." Well, have you spoken with someone? Have you tried to get fee assistance? Have you used your Silver Sneakers? Like, that's the conversations we need to be able to have with the community. When we're not able to do that and we just change policies that are, one, more difficult to operationalize, but, two, also create distinctions within the fee policies that we're trying to abide by, it just gets really complicated. So, getting there would be allowing us to have six months to see if we can't help people become educated and get them into kind of the right buckets so that we're not having to kind of change full policies. Because that's part of our role is community education and customer experience.
So, you don't see the need necessarily right now to make any adjustments from our perspective? It's what I'm hearing you say is that the program in your view is set up correctly. We just need to get the public to understand that setup? That's what I'm hearing you say.
Yes, yes. And if we get kind of another six months out, right? Because we've only been open for four months. It's actually not even been six months. If we get another six months to eight months out and we're like, "Okay, something is still really not working despite all of our best efforts, all of our fee assistance, all of these things, we're still, we still have this gap for some reason," then we would then look at that problem and say, "Okay, so what is the best solution to this?" Because I might argue that the best solution actually might not be that it's then free to all seniors all day. I might actually say, "Well, maybe we do an hour of walking that seniors only on the track because many of them are also very concerned about getting run down by other users." So, more like giving us the opportunity to then figure out what that solution might actually look like.
Yeah, I'm not challenging. I'm just making sure I understand.
Yes.
I get it. And then, last thing, you don't need to comment on it, but, and I'm not real familiar with Silver Sneakers, but I know it's in other states. I don't know how broad it is, but there has to be some experience with other jurisdictions, other cities that you can draw on, right? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much. Appreciate this conversation and appreciate the effort to give the department also the time to go through the first rainy season where this track will be in most demand. I think there will be some waves of new user education. We had the council booth at the Redmond Downtown Art Walk last week. And in thanking the staff, I also shared the feedback that we have these awesome stickers of the murals that are inside that facility. And as folks were asking, "Hey, can I take this sticker?" Yeah, did you know that that's actually a mural from inside, you know, the community center? And there was a pretty clear lack of knowledge that this new center is open. So, I actually think we have, to the director's point, like a lot of education to do that we have this beautiful new facility as well. So, really appreciate the conversation on this. My one request for when you come back, whether that's six months, whatever you decide, would love to hear more about how it's going in the Kid Zone next time. Thanks.
I don't have statistics, but I do have two children who have visited said Kid Zone and they love it. So, if you have kids, grandkids, and you want to come, you know, work out in the fitness zone and throw the kids in the Kid Zone, it is a good place to be. Just throw them in.
Council President Kritzler.
Thank you. First of all, just want to say thanks for listening to our feedback and working on that community partners or, what's the name of the program again?
Community Program Contractors.
Community Program Contractors, yeah, that's great because we did hear from some nonprofits about that and glad to be able to report that back. One question that I have received from the public judge, just wanted to clarify, is the fee assistance available for all types of passes?
So, the fee assistance is directly for our fitness zone, any drop-in activities. So, that includes like pickleball, table tennis, basketball, volleyball, et cetera, the track and locker rooms. Any program or activity is separate than that.
But they can do a daily pass, a monthly pass, or an annual pass using fee assistance.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Seeing other questions or comments? I had a question on rentals. Wonderful that we've been booked out since July, every Saturday through December. Do we have any, have we started seeing data yet on repeat users? And do we have any systems or process to make sure that not one or two groups are monopolizing? That way, we're giving all community groups or organizations an opportunity to have access to that?
Yeah, it's a great question, Councilmember. And so, recently, we passed the Activity and Facility Use Policy. And so, that actually highlights very specifically what our hierarchical order of who can apply, who can, whose priority use of our buildings and our activities. And so, yes, staff utilize that. Other than that process, we are an open book and people can submit permits and whatnot. If there's a conflict of, you know, some group wanting a specific date, then staff work through that and make sure that also in that Activity and Facility Use Policy, that it talks about diversification of community groups.
And I think as we continue to learn the building, as we've been talking about today, because it's been a really enlightening few months since the new community center has opened. You know, I think if we were to find that there was a user group that was doing a recurring program or something on a very high-demand day or night, then we will continue to kind of refine those policies to ensure that equitable access. Because I hear the heart of your question, which is, you know, we don't want one recurring group to take up the community room every Saturday night all year long, right? We want to be able to have that equitable access. So, as we continue to refine our policies around operations, those things will become more and more clear. And so, we'll make sure we keep you updated as we learn more.
Wonderful. Director, Deputy Director, thank you so much. And thank you to your staff who's done a phenomenal job. As my colleague said earlier, you know, Redmond really gets to shine between late spring and early fall. And here we are at the beginning of fall. So, thank you for shining and allowing Redmond to shine as you did. Next on our agenda is our final item, and that is the 2003-2004 Environmental Sustainability Action Plan Annual Progress Report. And Ms. Jenny Liebeck is joining us. Thank you and welcome. Oh, Council, real quick, we are going to be listening to provide Ms. Liebeck with direction on this, so it's not just receiving information this evening.
Yeah. So, good afternoon, Council. So, when we adopted the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, we committed to report annually on our ESAP implementation progress. And so, this is really, again, intended to be an annual check-in and really an opportunity for us to track progress towards our goals, celebrate our successes, and inform any like course corrections or things like that where necessary. And so, today, I'm just requesting council's approval to provide a staff report at the October 1 Council Business Meeting. And then during that presentation, I'll review key performance indicator progress, implementation highlights over the past year and a half, and then priorities for the year ahead. And I included the slide deck for that. The actual report, as well as the action-by-action updates, will be published this Friday. And I could open it up to any questions.
Council Vice President Forsyth and then Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation insight here. The one thing that I've been curious about that we haven't touched on is, in the emergency declaration, we talk about divesting from fossil fuels in our city portfolio. So, I'd love to, when you do your staff report, love to hear where we're at with that.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Looking forward to the conversation next week. I think that you said this right at the end, but I just want to confirm, Ms. Liebeck, that when you say we're going to see action-by-action, it means we'll see the status of all of the recommendation. Okay, perfect. So, looking forward to having that. And then, this may not fit, but I'm just going to put it in your bucket since you're here with us today. I'm hearing so much enthusiasm and interest in the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan update that is scheduled for next year. In fact, at the Downtown Redmond Art Walk, had some folks express interest in how they could get more involved with any committees related to sustainability. So, as you have openings or as you begin to need community involvement and all of that, do definitely keep us posted. We're out there, you know, at these community events and folks are definitely interested. Thanks so much.
Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. So, I'm really excited as I read this presentation for like the 10th time. I really feel like that we're starting to turn the corner and capture, you know, a real direction. So, I'm really grateful to you and your staff for the full So I'm really grateful to you and your staff for the full approach, the total approach. So I'm looking forward to this conversation. I would, I did mention on ombuds about a month and a half ago, and I did talk with Chief Lowe about infrastructure around EV charging and any kind of charging and the challenges that all of these companies are facing nationwide, actually worldwide, with theft from, and I'd be interested to maybe hear an enhancement on what our planning is, what we expect out of law enforcement, how we're going to work with other jurisdictions and other organizations. Because I think this is a real challenge and a real potential problem to the future of the confidence that people would have in our infrastructure. So I'm not expecting you to solve the problem, but I am hoping that you'll maybe provide some insight in what City of Redmond can do or who we can partner with.
Absolutely. That's a great question. Do you mind if we punt that conversation to Q1 of next year? Because actually, so we are doing some EV infrastructure planning work. This is in partnership with the TPNE team and the Planning Department. And so anyways, we'll be bringing some items to you and updates on that so we can make sure that we're integrating those considerations into that conversation, if that's all right.
No, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Liebeck? Concerns, questions? Seeing none, I'll hop in with mine. I love that we're showing data specifically, I'm on the, I'm sorry, the slide on climate and energy. Love that we're showing, you know, that we're down 22% over baseline and up only 2% over the previous year. Can we get some data? Because while that tells part of the story, I don't think that it tells the full story because we're not taking into consideration our growth. So while, yes, we may be up 2% last year, whether or not that is prorated by the growth that we've had. Because if we've grown, say, and I'm using this as an arbitrary number, because I don't have the stats in front of me, but if we've grown, say, by 17%, however, we're only above 2% in our energy usage, then that's not, saying that we're 2% above isn't telling the full story. And I want our listeners and for us to have just a fuller picture.
Great flag, yeah.
Great, thank you. Well, that is the last item on our agenda for the day. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing nothing, we are adjourned.